I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Village Board of the Village Vernon Hills, November 18th. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Lundin.
Here.
President Cook.
Here. We have a quorum. Would everyone please stand, if you were able, for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item is citizens wishing to address the board, and we had one person sign up. Mr. Renahan?
Good evening. I'm Todd Renahan, post commander with the American Legion Post 1247. Want to thank the trustees, the mayor, the village manager for tonight's send-off, if you will, of the banner recipients. We gave them the banners. So this, I think, was the fourth class. We had a few of the recipients that passed away, so their spouses were there or family members were there. And I tell you, it means a lot to them, especially those that served and fought in combat, that especially the guys that fought in Vietnam. They didn't get that welcome home that this village has given those soldiers. So we appreciate that. Also want to thank you for, last month I was here, I think it was, we talked about the honorary signs over at the high school, and today the signs were put up. So thank you for that. That's something else. That goes back over 80 years ago, or as we said, back when Bernie was around. But yeah, we did have a centenary in there. So, Craig, did I forget anybody? We also want to thank Assistant Village Manager John Petrello for all the help he's gotten. We appreciate that. It's never forgotten about that. So thank you for that. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, it was a good event tonight. And yeah, Bernie is, Bernie Parker's an amazing man. He turned 100 this year and spent three years from '42 to '45 with the Marine Corps and the South Pacific in World War II. I mean, that's amazing. He's an incredible person. Okay, next item. We go down to Assistant Village Managers. Correct the next thing? Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. As the board is aware, each year the village hosts a series of community events. Village events include the Holiday Light Celebration, which is coming up, Vernon Hills Days, Arbor Theater concerts, Pageant, July 4th Parade, and fireworks. Each of these events includes programming and entertainment that requires budgeting, and when the amount is over $25,000, we need board approval. Just as the musical entertainment requires financial consideration and approval for larger and more expensive bands, fireworks have also been an item historically brought before the board around this time of year for approval. The Village Vernon Hills is excited to join communities across the nation in celebration of America's upcoming 250th anniversary in 2026. This July 4th will mark 250 years since the signing of Declaration of Independence in 1776 and provides an opportunity to reflect on our nation's history, unity, and spirit. As we often mention, our partnership with the Park District and their collaboration allowing Century Park to be used as the launch site, we walk away with noting how we have one of the most beautiful venues in Lake County to assemble and celebrate as a community as we enjoy our events and our fireworks displays. For the last several years, we have used a vendor that has provided amazing fireworks shows. Last year's July 4th and Vernon Hills Days fireworks shows and finales were spectacular. Traditionally, we have secured a contract for services that includes a 22-minute display. The cost of a similar fireworks show for 2026, as we experienced last year, is $34,000. Noting the significance of July 4th, 2026, with this date being the celebration of our 250th anniversary, staff requested a quote for a show that would be memorable and appropriate for the upcoming occasion. Our vendor provided an option that includes 583 3-inch aerial displays or 147 more shells than our traditional show, 197 4-inch aerial displays or 14 more than our traditional show, 205-inch aerial display shells or 57 more than our traditional show, and 1,864 barrage shots, which is multiple fireworks tubes fused together so that multiple shots are fired from a single ignition. The 1,864 barrage shots will be 535 more shots than our traditional fireworks shows. For the proposed special 250th show, the duration of the show would remain approximately 22 minutes, but with an additional 753 rounds added, our vendor is proposing to increase the intensity and uniqueness of the display, which will include larger red, white, and blue fireworks with a grand finale in the middle and one that will be at the end that will not only be memorable but have an overall impact and be sure to impress. For the additional fireworks, with 57 of them being the largest we can shoot at this venue, we have been given a quote of $40,000 or an increase of $6,000. This proposal has been shared with CFD and their fire marshal. It has been reviewed, and this plan has been accepted, and the Park District is enthusiastically supportive of this concept as well. So staff, at this time, is requesting permission to prepare an ordinance for an expenditure of $40,000 for the 2026 July 4th fireworks show, along with an expenditure of $16,750 for Vernon Hills Days for a purchase not to exceed $57,000 that we'd like to put on the agenda in December.
Okay. Comments or questions from the board? Everybody pretty much, yeah, go ahead?
Pretty sure.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. And then you have one other item as well, sir?
Yes, sir. So this is just our annual reminder of key dates for yard waste collection by Waste Management and tips for disposing of leaves. So the last yard waste pickup by Waste Management will be Monday, November 24th for residents with Monday service and Tuesday, November 25th for residents with Tuesday service. As a reminder and a request from Public Works, we ask that residents do not rake, break their leaves into the street and please help to keep our neighborhood storm sewer grates clear of leaves and debris. This helps keep neighborhoods from flooding during and after heavy rains. Leaves can be collected and placed into designated containers or craft paper bags for pickup on designated collection days. Residents without yard waste subscription service can purchase yard waste stickers here at the Village Hall. After the last yard waste collection date, the following options do exist, and that includes mowing over leaves. By mowing the leaves and chopping them into smaller pieces, they do break down into organic material, creating nutrients for soil. Leaves can also be mulched and placed into garden beds for composting, and there are private landscape contractors that can be contacted to help with leaf removal. More information is on the Village website under News and on the Village's Go Green webpage. Again, the last dates for yard waste collection, Monday, November 24th and Tuesday, November 25th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Nobody else on staff has any speaking parts tonight, rather? That's on other parts of the agenda, correct? Okay. Then in that case, next item would be omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If any one board member, staff, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item, it will be pulled. Is there a motion to approve items A through E?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Lundin.
Aye.
President Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. We have no unfinished business, correct? Under new business. First item is Vernon Hills High School Football Hall of Fame donation request.
Thank you, Mayor.
Manager Kimony.
We're joined this evening by Vernon Hills High School football coach, Tony Munkin. He's here to present information on the new Vernon Hills Football Alumni Association Football Hall of Fame and donation and sponsorship opportunities for the village. Coach Munkin?
Thank you. Appreciate you guys seeing me tonight. I did bring a few of these from last year's inaugural Hall of Fame.
Thank you.
I'm going to try hard to not make this feel like a Shark Tank episode.
Thank you.
The last time I was here was 2001 in the fall. Our first team that had seniors made it to the quarterfinals, and Roger brought us in here to make a proclamation, and so that's the last time I was here. But in that same idea, when we had our 25th year last year of playing football, I wanted to do something special to honor the greats of our program and the tradition of our program. I'm a teacher and a coach. I've never been in the business world. I had no idea what I was doing. And went through all the hoops, created a 501 C-7, I learned, not C-3, and had to go through and get the EIN number and all that. But we wanted it to be just our own group. We wanted it to be just football, no outside influences. So the committee is made up of coaches, and once you're inducted into the Hall of Fame, you then become part of that committee, with the goal that, long after I'm gone, it's still going. And we want to turn it into not only a Hall of Fame night, but also a alumni reunion for the players. And so I've had to learn how to ask for donations because we need to pay for plaques, the programs that I handed out here, the venue, and the last thing I want to do is have the people getting honored have to pay for a ticket to the event. So I'm learning how to fundraise to do those things, and any support you guys would give me, that would be great. So, any questions?
Questions from the board, yeah.
Do any others?
Yeah.
Sports at Vernon Hills have this type of?
In fact, I don't know of any other high schools that have just exclusive football Hall of Fame. There are some schools that have an athletic Hall of Fame, and it's internal.
Got it.
We wanted our own just for us, because it's, you know, we think it's pretty special what we've created, and we didn't, we didn't want any outside influence. We wanted it just to be us.
But you said that Vernon Hills does have one for the?
I know they've talked about having an athletic Hall of Fame.
Yeah.
Right now, in the main hallway, there's a wall of fame.
Yeah.
That's just for our all-staters, but they've never done a full athletic program Hall of Fame. In fact, the only single sport Hall of Fame I know of, Deerfield has their own wrestling Hall of Fame, but I don't know of anybody else in the area that does what we're doing. I looked. I tried, because I had to create bylaws and all those things to get my EIN number, so.
Coach, if I may, the other sports, obviously, this could open up more, I'm not seeing a can of worms here, but maybe, like, okay, so here is a donation or one sport Hall of Fame that's not sponsored by 128.
Right.
That's private, we'll call it privately funded, and essentially could be publicly funded, depending on what we decide to do. Do other sports, do you get a feel that there's a resentment for that? Do you feel like, well, if you're doing it, maybe we should do that, too? Like, I'm just going to use swimming as for an example. I have no idea who the coach is. I don't have any swimmers, so just using that, would that, could that potentially be a conflict? Well, how come football gets it and swimming doesn't get it, for example? And is that more just because nobody, if swimming wants to have one, they can kind of do the route that you, take the route that you're taking?
I have not heard anything negative about it. And in fact, our boys' basketball coach was at the event last year, and he made no comments about trying to start one for them. But I do know that it's, it was a lot of work, and I don't know that, how many people would want to put in that kind of time to create this. I mean, I'm still, our season ended after the first round of the playoffs, and I've been working nonstop, getting ready for this, meeting with the venue, meeting with the printer for the programs. So I'm not sure how many people would want to put in that kind of time, especially when there's talk of starting their own full athletic Hall of Fame at the school.
Is there a way that the other sports can be included in yours?
I would not want, no. This is, we want this to be just special with our football program, and we do everything off-site. There's nothing in the school. Eventually, we'd like to fundraise enough to create our own website, just for football. We really feel that there's a true brotherhood with football, and honoring those guys is what's important to us. If somebody else wants to do one for their programs, I would encourage it, and I'd help them learn how to do it.
What are the funds that you're looking for, Tony?
I'm, I'd take anything. A thousand would be great. That would put me over the top for sure for this year. But I don't turn down anything. I got Living the Dream charters out of Chicago that, a friend of a friend was interested in buying an ad in the program. So I'm not turning down anything. We're just trying to, and we're not trying to make any money off it. In fact, my number has a max on what I can even put in the bank at the end of the, end of this, end of the year. So I'm, we're just trying to cover it so that, again, the honorees don't have to pay, and to pay for plaques, the venues, and those programs right there. That's all we're trying to make.
Did you say when this is going to be?
We, we said it, that we're going to do it the first Saturday in December every year, so the players can mark off their calendars that first Saturday every year so that they can come. Again, we're trying to make it an alumni reunion, and last year we had about a little under 100, and we're hoping to get it up to about 120 this year. And we added honoring teams this year and contributors. So the 2016 team that went downstate is being honored this year, and then Dan Catanzaro, who was on our chain crew and helped start the Boys Club years ago, even though he passed away last year, he and his wife and sons are coming, and we're honoring him as a contributor for Vernon Hills Football.
I have a question. Are you, are you looking for this to be an annual thing or a one-time donation?
If it was, that would be great. Right now, we're just starting this up. I'm learning as I go. This is only our second year doing it. If it was an annual thing, that would be fantastic, and can put anything that you guys wanted as far as in that program. But it's, you know, right now, it's, I'm just trying to create enough money to get through this year.
Trustee Schenk.
Thank you. So I know that it's a private-funded, like we talked about. It's a 501, what'd you say, C-7?
C-7, yes.
Limited. So, you know, carrying the Vernon Hills name, is there potential, any concern from the admin, like Athletic Director, about Title IX issues?
They're, they're all aware of it. No one has said anything to me about it. They're all aware of it, though. We have an assistant principal that's one of our coaches, the new Athletic Director, talked to me about it because he was, he's part of that group talking about starting the Athletic Hall of Fame at the high school.
So they've signed off, they basically signed off on, go ahead and?
They have not, they have not said anything to me negative. In fact, it's all, every, everything I've had so far has been very positive about what we're doing.
Well, yeah. First of all, Manager Kimony, what would be our process on this?
I think tonight is an inquiry, you know, asking questions about the program and the specific request. We can't take any action tonight, but we could certainly look for feedback from the board and bring something back at a later meeting for approval. Can we have a discussion about it tonight?
Sure.
Yeah, tonight would be the discussion, and then staff would have to put together some kind of a resolution and find the funding. What's the board's pleasure on that?
I think what you've done is, is great.
Thank you.
I just think that, like Trustee Schenk said, that could open a can of worms, and I know you've put a lot of work into it. I would be for, overall, but not for just individual, like football.
Understand.
Sorry.
I understand. We did, like I said, we wanted it to just be for us, a special, a special night, and like I said, we really want it to be a reunion. There's nothing that we enjoy more than seeing the old players and the young, the great young men they've become. And last year in our induction, we got to meet some of their kids. It was great. So.
You know, I would be, you know, I'm a little torn. I'm 50/50, but I'm probably leaning more towards supporting something, and I'll tell you why. With everything that I've said and Trustee Lundin pointed out, two things. One, for someone to take something like this on and do the work, you know, it's admirable, and it shouldn't go unnoticed, and if you're, if you're putting the work into it for the benefit of the kids that played, I just don't think that it's okay to have recognition for a group, and it helps build them as characters, as young adults, knowing that they can go back and revisit those memories, because those memories will actually help them learn how to overcome obstacles as they face as an adult. I do wish that there's a better way that just all the sports can have it, because there's no reason why they shouldn't, and there's no reason why 128 shouldn't support it, if this is all you're asking for. But then it does always come down to who's the agency, who's the agent vouching for this? And that's you, and you put the work in. So I would be, I would be for contributing some amount that we agree upon for those reasons. I do have some concerns about the equality, the equity in all of this, but they're more than welcome to also come in, too. If it happens, great, but we can always cross those bridges when we get to it. But I do, I applaud you for putting your neck out there, putting your unpaid time out there to do this, to, for the benefit. I mean, I don't see your name in the Hall of Fame. I see the kids' names, and that's what's important, in my opinion.
Thank you.
So along his lines, your initiative, totally appreciate it. The fact that 128 and the AD and no one, or the principal, had no issues with what you're trying to pursue, because at the end of the day, this is somebody taking their own time to pursue this. There's nothing stopping another, you know, coach or whatnot or department pursuing this. And quite honestly, there's already the Wall of Fame, so if the high school wanted to do something internally, that's one thing. I went to Palatine High School. They have something internal as well. But the fact that you took the initiative and, you know, you have support from the school, I fully support, you know, supporting your situation.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Agree. The initiative is fantastic. I'm not going to repeat what everyone has already said. Kudos to you because it's a lot of work. I am totally fine with this. I think it's great recognizing the kids who play, and not only that, it gives them, your current students, something to achieve, try to aspire to, and it helps them understand that, you know, you'll, you will be recognized and that others are not forgotten. In addition to that, the issue of equality among the school, everybody clearly has an opportunity to step up and do this. If you were to sit here and wait for every sport to be on the same page as you, this will never happen. So I, I think that equality aside, you have the right and you have the motivation to do this. I think it's fantastic, and I have no issue with it not being across the board at all.
Thank you.
So, yeah, go ahead. Trustee.
I don't feel strongly one way or another. I do appreciate the amount of effort that it takes to create something like this. I, too, have created a not-for-profit organization, FEIN number 501 C-3. I'm the treasurer of that organization. I spent a lot of time on that. It's totally uncompensated, and I appreciate your efforts as well.
Thank you.
The, in terms of it, you know, the equality aspect of it, yeah, I would prefer that there was a larger organization with all the sports, but maybe this will morph into that perhaps in some way or another. Certainly, your efforts will, will help others. If they, if they choose to do the same thing, they can draw upon your expertise and help not recreate the wheel necessarily.
Right.
Maybe you can create a website together or something if there are other sports that want to do it. Yeah, I'd be willing to dedicate a certain amount of funds of the village for this effort, at least, at least for the short term, and see where things go and how successful it is. Obviously, you know, when, when you have an inaugural event, you're going to have a lot more people interested. If it's every year, I don't know. You'll, you'll see how.
It looks like it's growing this year, and, again, the goal is that it becomes a reunion, and with the players, once they're in, becoming part of it. The hope is that it carries on long after I'm gone.
Yeah, and then maybe they can find other ways to make it self-sustaining entirely and not, and not drawn.
I have more players in the business world than coaches.
Well, and some of those guys are now coaching at other schools, so.
Correct, correct.
Like the offensive coordinator at Stevenson.
Yes.
Newberger?
Jason Newberger.
First one in there?
Yeah.
Well, I'll throw the, I guess, the last, or Tom would be the last. But yes, I look at this. I have to honestly say, I played 11 years of football. I've coached actually seven years Boys Club, and then when Vernon Hills started, I did seven years here for the Cougars. I happen to like the sport pretty much, and I've actually, I didn't go down this year, but from college, I was at the 25th Alumni Western Illinois, and they had ones, I'm looking behind, that were 50. Well, now I'm at 50. So personally, I'm for this. This is something, Tony, that you stirred off. Who's going to follow? I don't know. So I guess it's going to be down to the funds or what we can afford to do.
Perhaps somebody want to put a number on, and then we can let staff look for the funding, 500, 1,000, take your pick. You want to go the 1,000? See if staff can find that?
Can I ask, how do you utilize the funds? What are they, you said programs, plaques?
Programs, plaques, venue, and then tickets for the inductees and their families.
Where was the venue last, where was the last?
We were doing it at Posttime over in Libertyville.
Oh, yeah.
And the only reason it's there, I tried other places. They were the only ones that had a separate room that didn't have a 5,000 or bigger minimum to be in the space.
Now, if the money's going toward the inductees and their tickets, obviously, you're charging other people ticket money. Were you profitable it last year that you were able to?
Last year, we had enough to not get a bank fee on our business account. So we had $2,100 left over, and actually, some of that's my money.
So for the most part, the food sales and everything is paying for the food and the venue. Your goal is?
Most of, most of the food and venue are covered by the ticket sales. The remaining part of the rental comes out of the fundraising. It keeps, it helps keep the food prices low, obviously, because I don't, I don't want to try to get kids coming back and have them have to pay $50 to come back and say hi. And so that's, you know, the most, I would say, the majority of the money from the fundraising, if not all of it, is the plaques, the programs, and the tickets for the inductees.
Did you say, are you doing all the fundraising yourself?
Mm-hmm. I've tried to get others to help. It doesn't always work well. Maybe, maybe now that Coach Bellicomo's retiring, he'll help.
Sounds like a good National Honor Society volunteer time for some of your students.
You know, I had a couple people try at different locations, and they all said, well, you can't just walk in. You got to set up, set up appointments with the managers, because so many of the places, the manager's not even on site, so.
Well, and if you want to do some kind of fundraising, our golf course is always looking for, to help with events. The GM, the new GM is right back there. He'll be happy to talk to him.
How many people did you have at this event?
Last year, we had almost 100. This year, we're expecting closer to 120.
Okay.
So we might have to outgrow Posttime. They're not that big.
How much were your tickets being offered at?
They were 25 last year. Obviously, like everything else, prices have gone up. They're, they're 30 this year.
So is the consensus of the board to move forward to have staff look for 1,000 in the budget? And do we need, we don't need any kind of?
No, no, just the consensus, we'll, we'll bring back a resolution.
Okay.
And you're a C-7, 501 C-7?
Yes, C-7, organization, nonprofit organization.
But that's, okay. But I don't think that's, those are tax deductibles, right? Those?
That I'm not sure.
Yeah, just because it's a social club.
Right.
That's kind of what it falls under. So, but that's okay, though. I mean, it's.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll have staff look into where we can get the funds from, and we'll let you know when it's coming back to the board for.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Coach. Okay, next item is approval and passage of Resolution 2025-062, a resolution approving modifications to the outdoor dining permit for Postino, 887 North Milwaukee Avenue, Unit 400. Director Jennings?
Thank you. Postino is under contract to lease the City Barbecue space, which is at the north end of the central building in Melody Farm. The representatives of the, of the architectural firm were not able to make it tonight, so I'll do my best to, to get through all of this and answer any questions that you might have. The outdoor dining area for City Barbecue is approved back in 2018 with 41 seats in the area that you see with the arrow there. What Postino's proposing to do is a, probably more of a three-season outdoor area, similar to what Perry Steakhouse has. So it's, it's capable of being enclosed and being a little bit more comfortable for So it's, it's capable of being enclosed and being a little bit more comfortable for more, more months of the year. So what you see here is the outdoor area with the windows closed. Their intention, though, is, you can see the section view, the windows, I'll, I'll flip to this, and you can see, from the inside view, the two middle windows would be movable, so that area from about three feet up to about eight feet would be totally open, allowing just a free flow of air. So what they're proposing, as you can see here, is a, is an expansion of the City Barbecue area. City Barbecue had two very large outdoor smokers. So the, this area would extend east to include the area that the smokers currently occupy.
Isn't it extending north then?
Let's see. West, west, sorry.
No. Well, the smokers are on the north end.
Yes. So the area would go to the left in this.
That's what's showing the picture.
But aren't they, it looked to me like they were building a space in, not only incorporating the smokers, but, but, but they're building out sort of north.
So it's even with what's currently there? So it doesn't get any closer to the roadway? So it's even with that?
But they're closing that space that's on the north end of the building.
That's correct. So just one note, I did have an error in the original resolution that I provided. There were seats that I had not calculated correctly. So the correct seat count is in the revised resolution that I had passed out just prior to the meeting. It is 65 seats in that area and not 41.
Okay. And this is the company known as Postino's Wine Cafe?
Correct.
I believe, they only have one in Illinois, I think in Oak Brook.
There's nothing near here. I did ask them if they had a regional manager that might be able to attend, but there was nothing close enough.
Because for the most part, they're west coast and southeast.
West coast and east coast, correct.
Yeah.
So kind of clarifying what David, Trusty Oppenheim had to say. So do we have a layout that shows where it's from above? Okay, here you go.
So north is on the right side of this?
How far out is it coming?
It is, let's see if I have a dimension on that, sorry. So basically, if you look at the existing, there's a fence line and the, there's a wall around the smokers. So it would go along that same line.
So it's not much further out than what's there now?
It's even with what's there now. It would just be more enclosed than what's there.
Just changing. What kind of a timetable are they on? Do we know?
So they're, they're, right now, they're trying to confirm that this would be allowed so that they can complete construction drawings. So they're not, they're not in for permit with us just yet. So they're, they're hoping to get going on the permit drawings. I, I don't have a, an opening time for them yet.
Ah, okay, okay.
So that view that we're looking at now is the same thing? It's just with the windows open?
It's actually with the windows totally removed, so you can see what's behind it. It doesn't open as much as what's shown here. This is like a section view to show it without the windows altogether.
Can I make a request? So I'm looking at, so if I, let's see. If you can go back to the overlay where north was to the right there? Okay. So where's the drive coming into Melody Farms? Right there on the right-hand side, right?
On the right.
I would seriously consider putting some structural bollards on the, let's see, that'd be the west nor, let's see.
West.
The northwest corner. So any errant drivers not paying attention coming in and takes out that entire Kef outdoor area, you know, I think, I'm not sure who's here from Postino, but I think that is something P&amp;Z would have to review, but that's going to be my request, is that we protect that cornerish area with protective bollards, and not just six inches. I mean, I'm talking potentially the bigger ones, to prevent a wide turn coming in or a sharp turn coming in also, too.
So this would be, the way the PUD is, is written, this would be the only review. The outdoor dining area is, is all that would need to come. So the P&amp;Z would not have to review anything. But I can certainly, I, I don't think that request would be an issue with them. If they, if they did have an issue with it, I could certainly have them come back.
So I don't know how tonight works, but I would not want to, I personally don't want to vote on this unless I know that there is some better safety area, areas that are a little safer for the pedestrian or the customers eating.
Yeah, so I think there'd be two ways to proceed with that. A condition in this, the outdoor dining, could, we could add it and vote on it. Or I could have them come back and discuss it on the ninth.
Whatever you, whatever you think is the best course of action.
I, I don't think it would be an issue either way. If they had a problem with it, they could come back on the ninth. So I, I think it would be appropriate to, to include it as a condition.
Yes, so if we, if we were to approve it tonight, we could, we could approve it with the condition that bollards be added for safety purposes, correct? And, and then let them react to that?
Yeah, if they had an issue with it. They, they could make somebody available on the ninth, so I, I think that would be okay.
Trustee Schenk, would you be amiable? What we'll do is amend it tonight to include safety bollards? And then?
Yeah.
Then they would have the opportunity to react to that?
Yeah, and I think amended safety bollards as seen fit by our community development department, right?
That's a good, that's a good addition.
Okay, so then it winds up being Resolution 2025-062R as amended tonight at the meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion to that extent?
Motion.
Motion, a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trusty Markarth?
Aye.
Trusty Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trusty Forster?
Aye.
Trusty Schenk?
Aye.
Trusty Takaoka?
Aye.
Trusty Lundin? President Cook?
Aye, motion carries. No other new business, correct? Does anybody have any communications or anything? Because I have a couple of things. One, the other day, we were, I was, attended the Senator Johnson's 30 wonders of the 30th District that she has every year, and this year it was businesses. And they recognized several businesses in town. The ones I remember are Simply, Simply Be the New Place in Town and Nothing But Cake. And our other partner that we're going to talk about in just a little bit, Rustoleum. So they honored some of these businesses, all people who've done a lot of good work in the community in that. So it was quite a nice event. And I thank the Senator for doing that first. Then Assistant Manager Patrul, you wanted to talk about the holiday light thing?
Absolutely. So as Mike has just put up the slide, this is just our reminder that on Saturday, November 29th, at 4:30 p.m., we'll be returning for season two at Century Park for our Holiday Light Celebration. So Chris and the Public Works team have done a great job of getting the, the new tree. I believe it's coming in Thursday, and coming in Thursday. So people will be able to get out and see a sneak peek of it before the event. But come Saturday, November 29th, we're still grateful for our partners at CFD for, for participating, led by VHPD. And obviously, we want to say thanks to the Park District for making the venue available, and obviously Rustoleum. So Rustoleum, mentioned by, by the Senator, is one of our great businesses. They are allowing use of the parking lot, so we appreciate that. So a great event, Saturday, November 29th, and we hope the CFD fire truck arrives promptly, 4:30, and then the mayor and board members can help the Pageant Queens lead the countdown to the lighting of the new tree.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And it's going to be warm.
Not as of this afternoon.
It's going to be warm.
Got to be warmer than last year, that's.
Right, that's why I said it.
Okay, anybody else have any other communications? Okay, then if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the board and go to committee of the whole?
Motion to adjourn and go to committee of the whole?
Second. A motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Then the ayes have it. All right.
Nobody on there.
Nobody, okay. All right, then I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for November 18th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Trusty Forster?
Here.
Trusty Takaoka?
Here.
Trusty Schenk?
Here.
Trusty Lundin?
Here.
Trusty Oppenheim?
Here.
Trusty Markarth?
Here.
President Cook?
Here. Okay, we are convened, and there were no citizens who signed up to address anything to the board. So then we'll jump right to, first item of business is the approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of October 21st, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments, questions, additions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trusty Markarth?
Aye.
Trusty Forster?
Aye.
Trusty Schenk?
Aye.
Trusty Lundin?
Aye.
Trusty Oppenheim? Trusty Takaoka? President Cook?
Aye, motion carries. Next item is presentation and discussion of community scan results on synthetic cannabis products. Chief Grease?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really going to turn most of this discussion over to Deputy Chief Holubetz and our, our guest here. I'll just say that this is something that was brought to our attention last year, and it's been on our radar. We really were hoping, as we often do, that perhaps the state would be in a position, take some action, highly publicized, you know, in the last year, that, that wasn't going to happen. And so we thought this is an issue that we should bring to the board's attention. I was personally surprised to learn some of the information that you're going to see tonight, and I imagine that this might be news for some of you. So with that, I'll just introduce Deputy Chief Shannon Holubetz.
Thank you, Chief, for stealing most of my thunder. I appreciate that. Thank you for hearing us out tonight. I'm going to open this presentation with the recognition that the legal landscape around the topic of tonight's conversation has recently shifted. Nonetheless, we continue to feel it's important for the board to be briefed regarding any public health and safety concern affecting the village. So tonight, we're here to speak with you about the unregulated sale of intoxicating THC derivatives within Vernon Hills. You're going to hear more about the overall history of this issue shortly. But for background, the chief and I have been engaged with the Stan Strong Coalition on this topic for about the past year. Stan, Stan Strong's focus, if you weren't aware, is the prevention of underage drinking and drug use. And the coalition is represented here this evening by members of its staff, along with students from the Stevenson High School Catalyst Club. At the time we first met Stan Strong, they had just conducted their first community scan and determined Vernon Hills retailers were openly selling these THC intoxicants. The PD already had some awareness of this issue, and we did know there was meaningful support at that time among state legislators and the governor's office to regulate these products in that moment. Unfortunately, we've become aware that this support has eroded, and we believe recent federal efforts to regulate these products may not have the far-reaching effects required for change at the state and local levels. So we are fortunate tonight that Stan Strong recently completed a follow-up community scan. And they've been invited here this evening to, along with these local high school students, to share a brief presentation regarding the results of the updated community scan with the committee of the whole. After the presentation, the chief and I will be able to address any questions you may have and discuss potential regulatory options if you deem inappropriate. But with that, I'm going to call up our guests. And approaching right now is Leela Nitala from Stan Strong, as well as students from the Catalyst Club at Stevenson High School.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Holubetz. Good evening, everyone. I am Leela Nitala with Stan Strong Coalition. Stan Strong is the primary substance use coalition in Vernon Township. I am here to share some facts about the intoxicating THC derivatives that are freely available in our community. And also, I will be sharing some of the results from a recent scan that we have conducted. But before that, I am joined here by Shri Karbatta, who is the director for the local policy, and Colby Nixon, who is a director for the state policy committees from the Catalyst Youth Coalition at Stevenson High School. They have done tremendous work regarding this, this topic, and they will be sharing some facts with you now.
So just kind of to introduce Catalyst Club as a whole, if we can move the slide forward? So just kind of introduce Catalyst as a whole. Our mission is to prevent underage drinking and drug use in our community through education, outreach, and advocacy. And we do that through multiple events, research, and lobbying throughout the year with our students and our committee members.
Yeah, so we'd love to break down for tonight just what these intoxicating compounds are and kind of how they came to be in the first place. So we saw in the 2018 farm bill, we'll get to in a second. That's what really established the definition of what hemp is, kind of the non-intoxicating part of the cannabis plant. But what we've seen over recent years, since the passage of that federal farm bill, is that a lot of these compounds have kind of surfaced by retailers and by just the cannabis industry as a whole to kind of circumvent these regulations we've seen, both in states where we legalize cannabis sales, like Illinois, and in other states as well. So these hemp-derived cannabinoids, it's a, like, complex term, but it simply defers to these intoxicating compounds we see occurring naturally in the cannabis plant. There are all kinds, hundreds, but the most common ones are Delta-9 THC, Delta-8 THC, and Delta-10 THC, among all kinds of other compounds. And when we look at the definition of hemp, so the quote-unquote "safe" part of the cannabis plant, that only includes Delta-9 THC in its definition, saying that a hemp product can only have a maximum of 0.3% by dry weight of this Delta-9 THC. But what we've seen in recent years is that other types of THC, such as that Delta-8 and other compounds, have been chemically modified by these companies to be brought to market outside of that regulation, so they can call them hemp products and avoid the regulations that Illinois and other states have put into place, and then sell them in virtually any way they would like without any of that oversight. So we've seen them sold in edible products, often with very high concentrations. The max concentration that we've seen recommended by both retailers and then by like FDA and other corporate organizations as well is 10 milligrams of THC is enough to get that quote-unquote "high feeling" for legal adult use. We've seen substances sold with 2,000 milligrams, even in Vernon Hills, in very youth-targeting packaging, things like Skittles, Cheetos, with just slight variations to make them able to get through copyright laws. So it's been a very big issue for youth in our local area, just because these are so accessible, they're so unregulated, and they're sold in such wide-ranging areas where we've seen in dispensaries, it's a lot easier for us to have that kind of regulation, have that kind of adult-use-only mindset. When they're being sold right now in gas stations and vape shops, there's a lot less regulation, a lot less kind of dissuadement for youth to have their hands on these things. Kind of go back to the farm bill. I can touch on this a little bit already. We have seen some recent federal changes. The appropriations bill that just passed and reopened the government a couple weeks ago did have a provision in this that we've been fighting for heavily on Capitol Hill that does kind of redefine what hemp is, to be that more accurate definition that includes these other kinds of THC compounds. One thing we're still not sure, and we're still waiting to receive guidance from our folks on Capitol Hill and the FDA as well, is whether this will trickle down to the state level. I'm sure you're aware, we've seen a pretty big disparity between federal regulation, statewide regulation on cannabis products. They're technically still illegal at the federal level, and yet we sell them recreationally in Illinois. So we're still waiting to see if these regulations at the federal level will actually make it into state law where we still define it the old way, which leaves those loopholes still open. So what we're really talking about tonight is just making sure we're well aware of the situation in terms of these substances being sold still here in Vernon Hills, and feel prepared to address that issue.
All right, so we're going to talk about how does this pose a problem for the youth surrounding areas? So the way these retailers kind of target the youth audiences is through bright packaging with cartoons and images, and just like fruity, sweet dessert flavors, like bubble gum, blueberry, strawberry, things like that. And like Colby mentioned before, they're, they kind of like change the packaging, like for Sour Patch Kids, they'll add something else on it, and it's just like knockoffs for common teen products. But the big importance of this whole issue is that research found that 11.4% of 12th graders used Delta-8 THC. And kids are not only exposed to cannabis products, but the risks that come along with it, such as being exposed to the heavy metals and the residual byproducts that are in like vapes and other e-cigarette electronic devices that are being used. So here are just some, a couple more examples of that, you know, packaging where they've changed it. Like you'd see Trolley, they've kind of changed it and put an E, and Warheads and things like that. So these are the type of packagings that youth find appealing, and they kind of go ahead and buy them because they think, oh, like, it's not going to do much, you know? I'm just trying to fit in type of situation.
So we also kind of want to talk about what other neighboring communities are doing. So to start off, kind of giving over that grace period so that these retailers are able to weed out these products that are not properly regulated. And then kind of to follow that, we want to include conducting compliance checks and also penalizing these businesses in the future, right? Because just having that ordinance, we don't think is enough, and we think that has to be followed up upon. Some other communities, including Libertyville, Libertyville has nearly banned all cannabis business establishments. It's kind of like a whole ordinance. Wheeling also has a broader definition of THC products, and also some other townships like Evergreen Park and Orland Park. Orland Park does not have any dispensaries, and yet they still have a ban on THC products. So kind of our goal through our coalition is to direct all intoxicating THC sales into licensed dispensers.
With what, with everything that the youth?
With everything that the youth shared, Stan Strong has been actively involved in addressing this issue for the past many years. Our goal is to educate the community about the safety in using these products, and more importantly, it is to kind of, as Shrikar said, to make sure that the communities, the products are not available in the communities to the youth. So, we partner with a broader network of prevention specialists in our state, and it's called the Illinois Prevention Network, and as a group, we have traveled down to Springfield multiple times to talk directly to our lawmakers and educated them about this topic. We have also conducted a couple of scans in our community. We are very actively and closely, closely work with our neighboring coalition. They share the border with us, the Lake Cook Road, so we kind of like, you know, worked and conducted this right across like entire Wheeling Township and the Vernon Township areas. And what we have seen is that our successes include, like, you know, we were able to help Prospect Heights and Mount Prospect pass these ordinances, which defined and, you know, banned the sale of these products in vape shops and smoke shops and gas stations, basically anywhere outside of licensed dispensaries. And we were also able to help the Buffalo Grove City Village to enforce stronger, like, you know, enforcement when it comes to these issues. I'm gonna share about that in just one minute. And we have also, like, you know, statewide, we have partnered with many other coalitions, and we were able to bring a patchwork effect. So, there are many multiple small villages and towns across the state which have these ordinances in place, and this is through the collaboration of Stan Strong with other prevention partners. I would like to close our presentation, sharing the results of our 2025 Vernon and Wheeling Township scan. As you can see here, we have multiple cities in this chart, and what's interesting is that there are cities which have the THC ordinance, and basically, what that means is that these cities ban the sale of these products outside of licensed dispensaries. And as you can see, most of the cities which do have the ordinance in place did not have the products being sold outside of, in any of the smoke shops, gas stations, liquor stores, convenience stores, in any of these retail shops. Our success, I think, I would like to highlight two villages here, Prospect Heights, because our partner and director, we have her here, Chris Relfers, she is the director of Link Together Coalition, who we work with very closely, and she actually helped the village write their ordinance. And in the last one year, we have done the scan last year as well, and we have actually conducted, like, you know, multiple mini-scans in between as well, and we have seen the Prospect Heights has zero products available outside in any of these convenience stores or any other retail stores. Same story with Wheeling. Wheeling has had its ordinance in place for many years now, and of the 16 stores that we have scanned, only two of them have the products here. Our success also includes Buffalo Grove, so we work very closely with the trustee in Buffalo Grove, and after we conducted the scan last year, what they did was they had a meeting with all of the store owners of vape shops and smoke shops, and they gave them like a strict, kind of like a warning, an enforcement. And when I personally went into these stores this year, and there was a huge change in, like, you know, the availability of the products, but also, most importantly, the store owners were aware of the ordinance. So, when I asked them, like, you know, just as a common community, you know, resident consumer going into the store and saying, hey, I'm looking for these products, they actually said, we do have an ordinance in place, and we are no longer selling them. So, I would like to conclude with that and hand it over to Deputy Chief Holubetz, and thank you so much for listening to us.
Well, thank you very much, Leela, and thank you very much, our students. We greatly appreciate having you here. The, I'll bring this back to one point here, 'cause again, the, since this, since this presentation started coming together, there has been a significant change at the federal level. But we do not know how the closing of the federal loophole will affect us locally. And one thing I do know is that, that law, enforcement is not set to begin for another year, and this, this federal closure of this loophole was only signed into law within the last week. So, we don't know that there's going to be a trickle-down to the state, and, you know, we, we may need some local regulations here. Of course, that'll be up to the board. If we determine local regulations are appropriate, we have had some preliminary discussions as staff. I've met with Director Jennings, as well as Village Attorney Farolo, and we do think there is a potential framework for regulating these products within the village. But I imagine the board has some questions, so we'll open it up.
Okay, questions to the board?
So, is the age to purchase these products the same as, like, cigarettes and?
There is no age to purchase.
What, there's no age?
They're completely unregulated.
Oh, geez. You're kidding me? Okay. I'm in support of, you know, what they're doing in the surrounding communities.
Buffalo Grove, Libertyville, they should be sold in dispensaries.
Sold in dispensaries, which we don't allow anyway, so, yeah, I had no idea there was no age. Holy cow. And Jamie Epstein, a very good friend of mine, she was one of the major starters of Stan Strong in Lake County, so I know you know Jamie.
So, is this also including, I've been reading there's some alcohol too that's coming through, like, I think Willie Nelson has something out there?
So, there are, there are drinks. They are not, I'm not aware of them specifically containing alcohol. These are THC-infused drinks, which are, yes, those are available for sale within the, within the village. I've seen them within our liquor stores when I've, when I've gone to check, but rather than alcohol, they contain THC.
Yeah, they look very similar to the, the new wave of seltzer alcoholic products.
Oh, so they don't have them?
But they are not alcoholic, they are THC-infused, cannabis-infused.
There, there was, within the presentation, there was a photo actually of, I believe it was a Cheech and Chong sort of seltzer.
But I've only seen it in liquor stores. To date, I've only seen it in liquor stores. Doesn't mean I haven't seen, if it's not there, I just haven't seen it.
Yeah.
In like a gas station.
I can say I have seen it outside of the liquor stores. I, within the village, I've seen it in at least one, I haven't gone to every one, I've seen it in at least one smoke shop, and in that case, that was a 60-milligram dose in one can, being sold alongside bottled water and Gatorade without much differentiation.
Yeah, because if it's not alcohol, it's not covered by our current ordinances.
Right. Yeah, and for reference, I believe these Cheech and Chong seltzers, if memory serves me, those are five milligrams per serving, and that one can in that store was 60. So, we get into the, the high potency of these products again.
So, what do we need to do from an ordinance standpoint?
If the board, if the Cal gives staff direction, we can work on generating an ordinance to bring back for the board's consideration that would, fortunately, our attorneys worked with some of these other jurisdictions. We have a good framework, it's tested, it was effective, and if the board wanted to give that direction, we can provide you at an upcoming meeting with an ordinance that would ban the sale of these products in our community, and these are all licensed retailers. It would not be particularly challenging for us to take care of the inspection and enforcement part of it. But as we've seen in other communities, we think most retailers, if given the information, they will comply. Perhaps there is a grace period for retailers that need time to return stock, move stock, or whatever, so you don't just hit them overnight with such a change, but...
So, we can't put an age limit on it? We're better off just saying no derivatives, basically, right? That's, that's what we want?
No derivatives, or?
Right?
Or, or no THC?
Or whatever, whatever the...
No THC.
I can tell you that Wheeling, I helped draft the Wheeling ordinance, which we passed in 2023 in Wheeling, and they banned all THC products outside of licensed dispensaries, all products containing THC. Highland Park, about a year later, followed suit, passed almost the same ordinance, so a complete ban on THC, products containing THC. The chief mentioned a grace period. In Wheeling, they gave a grace period of about 60 days before the ordinance went into effect. As you saw on the slide, there were multiple businesses in town that were selling these products in Wheeling, gas stations, vape shops, and convenience stores. Most, everybody complied. The police department did a survey and went around, and most everybody complied. I see that there are two with products. I will let the police department know about that in Wheeling, but it was remarkably, there was a lot of cooperation. And the ordinance contains penalty provisions, fines, as well as the possible loss of a business license if the sale of these products continues. But a grace period and an education period, I think, is a very wise thing to do in this scenario.
I, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed to me that the intent originally when dispensaries were legalized in this state, that was where everything was gonna be controlled, at a controlled dispensary, and, and this just significantly skirts that, so...
As a result of the federal law, the farm bill, which the young man mentioned, there was, there was some exception language regarding certain weight of THC being contained within these products at a dry weight basis, but what it doesn't account for is that when these products were, when they're created and they're heated, the THC undergoes changes, and it gets more powerful.
Yeah.
And it's, it's just largely unregulated, and there's just no age restriction. As far as us putting an age restriction in to monitor that, I think would be grossly ineffective.
Yeah, eliminated completely.
Well, and this, all of the THC products nowadays, and the stuff you get at dispensary, it's not Cheech and Chong's THC, it's a different animal now, it's...
And for those communities that do have dispensaries, Wheeling does, and Highland Park does, the dispensaries are very, very good at checking age, and they're very restrictive there under law, because they could lose their license if they're not, and there's an awful lot of revenue at stake. So, that's where it belongs. We don't have them in our town, but the sale of that...
So, what you're looking for is consensus from the board to move forward with, let staff and police department and council draft an ordinance that would...
Yes, sir.
So, Trustee Schenk?
Yeah, go ahead.
Trustee Takaoaka?
By all means.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
I think there's, it's, it's, what you had said, they can synthesize the legal and make it more potent, and package it for what the legal is, right?
That's exactly right.
All right. Sorry, Walter White, don't come to Vernon Hills, I guess, right?
Can't control it.
Can't control it, it's gotta stop.
It's a wild west right now.
Hundred percent.
Okay, message received, thank you.
All right. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Nice presentation.
What does your shirt say?
Why?
Well, there's a bunch of other stuff on there. What does it all say?
Yeah.
You're coming up now.
It essentially says, what's your why, which is like, what's your why for staying drug and alcohol-free, because that's our whole, like, motto essentially? And then, like, we take like the answers to those questions, and we feature them a lot.
So, what does it say? There's so many...
So, it says, there are so many reasons to live drug-free, what's your why? And it has like categories, like health, belief, school, goals, and family.
What's your why? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, next item is concept discussion, Prairie River Townhomes, 55 South Milwaukee Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just before I hand it over, just a quick overview of this, the Corner Site LLC is a contract purchaser of a property, and as you hear in a moment, there's a, the total extent of the property is somewhat in flux, and so, this request is a little bit unique in that the, given the possibility that the amount of land area might expand in the interest of time, if the Committee of the Whole is in favor of this, this concept moving forward, an additional question I would ask is, just for confirmation, that if, if the committee's consensus is to move forward to technical review, that it would be acceptable to include some additional land that's currently being sought by the developer? Just one quick note again, before I hand it over, this, this project is also unique in that some of the land is in unincorporated Lake County, adjacent to Vernon Hills, so we would need to process a voluntary annexation in conjunction with this. So, with that, I would like to hand it over to the developer to introduce the project. I'm happy to answer any questions after the presentation.
Thanks, Andrew. Hi, David Schwartz for Corner Site LLC. Nice to see you guys again. I was here a couple months ago for a similar project just down the street. So, we've been working for the last couple months to assemble a couple of properties, three, three total pit numbers, two separate sellers, on Milwaukee Avenue and American Hotel Registry Circle Drive, which has quite, quite a ring to it. And there, there is a stoplight interchange there. So, one of the sites controls the property directly across the street from the stoplight, and it already, there already is a stoplight facing it, so it would be able to service these parcels and whatever else came along with it. So, I've included the zoning map here, so you can see, if you look where, on the east side of Milwaukee Avenue, down from where CDW is, where you see that there's an R7, and then a little pink B1, and then something that's not included, and then an R1, those are the sites, the B1, and then the area that isn't included, which is in unincorporated Lake County.
So, that little finger that comes in?
Yeah, exactly.
That's the, that's the part you're talking about?
Yeah.
Would be of voluntary annexation?
South, south of there. So, the pink B1 at the very end, to the left of that, where the 21 is, that is roughly where the signal is, and so, it would be that B1, which would need to be rezoned, and then the unincorporated property to the south.
To the north, the dog style?
Correct, exactly, exactly, exactly. So, dog style, then there's sort of two parcels, and then there's another parcel that is in the village, and those are the three that we're assembling. It's about, about six and a half acres total. So, we've developed a site plan for 50 townhomes in 10 separate buildings. It's actually a combination of kind of traditional front-loading two-story townhomes, and then rear-loading three-story townhomes. So, there's kind of a combination of different types of units, and what's nice and unique about this is the end units on the two-story have a first-floor primary bedroom, which is pretty rare to find, and we think there's gonna be quite a market for. We're including some just kind of landscaped courtyards. We plan to have a dog play area, as well as a children's play area incorporated, and we would like to activate the riverfront to the extent we can as well, with maybe a little overlook, and potentially a trail that could ultimately connect with the Desplains River Trail to the New, to the north, when the, when the properties adjacent to it are subsequently developed, and we'd like to sort of establish a pattern that there'd be cross-easements as well. Which brings me to...
Before you leave that, that particular slide, where exactly does the floodplain come in there? Because that's...
Oh, yeah, hold on, I think I have a slide that shows it. There, here we go.
It's going right up to the river.
Yeah, 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 but actually, very little floodplain on these. There's about 10 feet of rise right off the river from most of the, most of the site. So, you can see the, where it's, where it's cross-hatched, is actually, where it's cross-hatched is the floodplain that you could never do anything with.
Correct.
And then, the sort of pink and the green, and the, it's floodway, which you can sort of work around, and, and there's a small wetlands on the property too, which we plan to either work around or remediate. It's a really small one, so that process, we're not, we're not scared of it. We've done, gone through that before on a property in Buffalo Grove, and we feel like we can either work around it or remediate it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So, no, it's nice, it's nice and high and dry. But, but one of the sort of big topics that came up with this site when working with staff was to make sure that it would be possible, possible to be connected to properties to the north and the south, should they be redeveloped. I know there's been stuff in the works over the years, so we've already consulted a traffic engineer at BLA and discussed modifications we would make to our intersection design to ensure that there's, you know, a straight right-hand and through, and through lane, and a dedicated left-hand turn lane, and enough stacking going back, you know, the proper distance between the interior drives and Milwaukee Avenue to make sure that, that cars could stack up while they're waiting for the stoplight. We, you know, I discussed with them, you know, would you need a right-hand turn lane on Milwaukee, and any restriping, and, you know, that would sort of be determined in future traffic studies, depending on the intensity of the use. They didn't think for this development that you would need that. And they also mentioned that there were potentially, the assumption would be there would be right out, right-in, right-out access in any of the future sites that got developed, especially the larger one to the north.
Do you plan to bury the power lines in these sites? Do you overhead power lines?
You know, I haven't gotten that far, so I'm not entirely sure. It would be nice. It's expensive, but it's, it's not always prohibitive, so we would certainly look into it.
So, back again to the, the drive... So back again to the, the drive access, what...
Okay, yeah.
So are you, are you anticipating sort of a parallel frontage road?
Yes, if you look at the site plan, kind of to the east of that first set of buildings, would be kind of a parallel frontage road that would connect, be designed to...
Through your, through your property.
Yeah, 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 and we would, we would offer easements, and I would expect that a, a condition of the approval would be that there would be the potential for easements...
Yeah.
...to any future buyers, that they'd be able to access, our access to the stoplight.
Connecting your other, the other property you wanted to develop, the shelter there.
Yeah, yeah. Because, you know, obviously that, that stoplight holds the key to this whole stretch of, of Milwaukee Avenue.
So when you were a couple of months ago, it was the one to the south?
Yeah, if you look at the, that little R7 that sticks down in the lower right-hand corner was the one I was here on.
So you weren't aware of this going on when you talked then? Because you were talking...
I was just becoming aware of these sites and trying to get them under contract.
Okay.
But it's a separate, it's actually a separate partnership, and, um...
Because I remember the conversation about getting the traffic up to the stoplight again, and I...
Yeah, 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 right, right.
There was a lot of concern for that across all those lanes of traffic.
Yeah, and this site, the site that we were here on a couple of months ago is just a right-in, right-out access. Um, just the, the architectural style will be sort of first-class masonry, fiber cement, anything you'd see in a nice newer, you know, single-family or multifamily development. And, and then I did want to bring up, as Andrew mentioned, that sort of as we were kind of finalizing our submittal for this, the, the property immediately adjacent to the north suddenly came for sale, after everybody told me they weren't sellers and "don't bother with the Honey House," here they were. So, um, they, they are sellers now, we've actually come to an agreement with them in anticipation of maybe possibly including it. So as long as we're here and we're getting feedback, I wanted to make sure that if we expanded it another two and a half acres or so, it'd probably be another, you know, 25 units or so, bringing it up to about 75 units, we suspect we would be able to accommodate on the larger, overall, you know, be up, up to about eight, eight and a half, nine-acre site.
And I might have missed it, were, were you also the developer that was looking at just north of Honey House?
No, 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 no.
Uh, that, that was somebody else, they did come back about a month or so ago, that was the Connor Development.
Okay.
Uh, with, directly to the north, and that's, that's the discussion of access, just ensuring that whatever the intersection design is can accommodate enough stacking for, for the amount of development proposed in this general area.
Yeah, because we weren't so happy with that development without having access to, to the stoplight there, but if you're going to create that all...
Yeah, and if you want to put me in touch too, because we could probably try to work together, depending on what their use is, to design the, the site plan, you know, and the interior drives as best we can.
So how many total, if you were to account for the one that trustee Oppenheimer was saying, and if you were to put the Honey House in there and, and your other two developments, how many total units are we talking here, Andrew, do you think?
It's about 400.
400, accessing that one intersection?
Correct.
Okay, and only one way in and one way out?
Yeah, I think the idea of this, at this preliminary stage, is to design the intersection so that it can accommodate the, the stacking. If it's all residential, they have peak hours, they're going to be the same, and this light, it's going to be a long wait time, so that's a really critical piece of this moving forward is to ensure that any stacking is adequate to, to serve everything that would feed into it.
But I did want to clarify that there would still be right-in, right-out access, likely, in that future development to the north.
The north and the south.
Yeah, 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 so...
But if I'm going left, I'm stacking in...
If you're going left, you're stacking. But I'm only 50 or 75 units.
Well, you are, but...
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where are we here?
Yeah, no, no, I understand that. Um, so we've been doing townhome communities just a, a little bit more on who we are, as I explained the, the last time, you know, several kind of infill suburban stuff, Northbrook, Mount Prospect, Highland Park so far.
So tonight you're looking from, uh, from the board, you're looking for just consensus, Andrew, to, to go forward with this in what way?
Yeah, it's, it's consensus to move on to technical review with the understanding that an annexation would be part of this in addition to rezoning, and that if the additional property is, is indeed confirmed to be under contract, that they could include that as well.
Okay. Anybody in the board?
No objection.
Any objections? No? All right.
I could, I think so, you're sure.
Hope to see you guys soon.
Okay, next item is discussion of the Vernon Hills Golf Course Proposed 2026 Rate Plan. Manager Timoney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It is coming to the end of the calendar year 2025, and also the start of the village's budget process for the upcoming year. In preparation for that, we have a presentation this evening from Kemper Sports with a proposed rate plan for calendar year 2026 for the golf course. What we're looking for from the board this evening is direction to staff to prepare an ordinance at our December meeting, so that we can have that approved in time for the new rates to come into effect on January 1st. So with that, I'd like to introduce our team from Kemper Sports.
Good evening, and, and thank you, everybody, for your time this evening. Just a couple of quick introductions, I think everybody's met Mary Kate Walsh, she's our regional sales and marketing director that helps support the facility, the muni at Vernon Hills, Vince Suarez, vice president of operations, I've been supporting the, the club for the last five or six years or so, but I'm thrilled to be here introducing Jason Pablocki, or reintroducing Jason Pablocki, returning as the general manager at the muni at Vernon Hills. Jason was with us for several years back, I want to say 2017-ish to 2020, and, and we're thrilled that he started yesterday, so really, really glad to have him back as part of the team. So he'll be an active part of the budget process here as we, as we ramp up and, and really get ready to set the, set the financial targets and get those to, to Tom and Kevin and the rest of the, the village team here in early December. Mary Kate and I, along with Joshua Howren, our, our pricing expert, met with several stakeholders over the last two, three weeks to talk about the muni at Vernon Hills. Tom was part of the meeting that we had, Kevin and John were part of the meeting that we had here at the, at Village Hall, to really talk about what we wanted to do, evaluate the rates that were put in place in calendar year 2024, or, I'm sorry, 2025, and then evaluate what we wanted to do in calendar year 2026, which would kind of spearhead both FY '26 and FY '27. Up here, you've got some historical information for the muni at Vernon Hills. Really what you can see here is that there's been a, there's been a huge revenue increase over the last 10 years or so, along with what you don't see is the huge round increase. I show some rounds down at the bottom from FY '23 through FY '26. I can tell you that rounds back in FY '20, which was pre-COVIDs, were at 12,800-ish rounds pre-COVID, so we've had a huge lift in rounds since COVID's, kind of coming out of COVID's. We took it down to EBITDA, which is really the operational profit of the facility or loss of the facility, and then we rolled in some village payroll expenses and depreciation. We started to show, big thanks to Tom and, and his team, Patrick, who, you know, helped us allocate a, a portion of village services back to the financials, so that you can really see the true picture of the muni at Vernon Hills. Rounds for 2000 FY '26 are projected to come in at about 18,600 rounds, which is up from 18,056 rounds in FY '25. It's about a three and a half percent increase in rounds year over year. Illinois as a whole right now is up almost 1% year over year, and that's through the end of September, up 1% year over year in rounds played, and the muni in that same period through September is up three and a half percent. Really what we looked at was the resident rounds. We concentrated heavily on bringing, you know, what, what's happening with the resident rounds, why are we seeing, you know, more non-resident versus resident, and how do we get the resident rounds to, you know, get back to where they were back in FY '23, FY '22? And that was a heavy area of concentration that we discussed in our meeting. One of the things that we discussed was what the customers are saying and what our net promoter score is, and anybody, I think we've talked about this before, net promoter score, how likely somebody is to recommend your business to their friends and family, and I always put it on a scale of you've got, you're really, really, really successful organizations or businesses such as Disney, if you have a bad time down at Disney, you've, you've done it to yourself, everybody has a great time, their net promoter score is in the low 90s, along with if you need something tomorrow, odds are that you're going to go onto Amazon and you're going to, you click the button and it's going to be at your doorstep, maybe even tonight, definitely by midday tomorrow, and Amazon's got a net promoter score in the 90s. When you look at your organizations or your companies that really people would maybe prefer not to do business with, or would like things to change a little bit, you're looking at like cable, cable companies, you know, com, comm ed, you know, the electric companies, the utility companies, and their net promoter scores are in the low teens. So the muni at Vernon Hills, when you look at the surface, everything looks great. I mean, 65.7 is the net promoter score, our company goal is 70.0, we always like to be at 70.0 or higher. Our net promoter score was up two points year over year from 63.7 to 65.7. Course conditions at 8.9, if you recall, we put some additional money into fertilizers, chemicals, we did some tee box work, we did some tree trimming, et cetera, put some money back into the golf course, and course conditions at 8.9 are, are even really, really strong. Likelihood to return at a 9.3 is really a, a great number, 9.3 is fantastic. Overall experience at 8.9 is wonderful and service at 9.4. So on the surface, everything looks great, and everything is great, it's not necessarily broken. But we took a look at what the differences were between the net promoter scores of our annual pass holders versus our paying public, and we really dissected, and our net promoter score on the annual pass side is 76.2. You know, your annual pass holders are coming in, they're paying one rate, they're, you know, they're cost averaging out, their golf, it's coming down to pennies on the dollar, and they're really happy because they're getting a big bang for their buck. The net promoter score for the public play was 57.1. Same, same NPS a year ago was 59.9, so we saw that net promoter score drop. If you recall, we instituted dynamic pricing, you know, a year ago, year and a half ago, and I'm going to say that dynamic, the dynamic pricing worked, it did its job, but maybe it did its job a little too well, because net promoter score dropped on the people that were paying. In 2025, like I said, we instituted dynamic pricing, it was to increase, the goal was to increase revenue while protecting against possible rounds decline. So if you have a, a year where, you know, it's a heavy, heavy rains, or I think in 2025, there hasn't been a single Cat Five hurricane that, that's hit, there hasn't been a hurricane in, in Florida, hurricaneless, the weather was great, we saw wonderful golf down in the Midwest, but if we have heavy periods of rain, we have heavy storms, we have a drought, it gets really hot, dynamic pricing really protects against those rounds declines that you possibly could have. And it, we tried to implement a pricing strategy for steady growth. We, we did accomplish the goal with revenue growing and dynamic pricing increasing revenue by 17,000 from the same static pricing that would have been in place. So with dynamic pricing, it raised the ceiling enough from what the static pricing would be to, to generate an extra 17,000, extra 17,000. The goals for 2026, but I think we did that at the, at the, at the, on the backs of, of customer happiness, is what we did it on. So if we, you know, you kind of take a look at what that happy medium is and what the rounds need to be, and we'll get to that in just a second. Goals for 2026, increased resident participation, would love to see the resident rate, or the resident participation go up even more. Residents are coming out in, in groves to use the practice facility, they're coming out to use the new putting green, they're coming out to the events that we have, but we want them to come to the muni to use it on an everyday basis more frequently than they are right now. It's not that they're not using it, we just want them to use it more frequently. We also want the continued elevation of the member and resident events, you know, Dave Shanks, our interim GM, did a wonderful job during the fall season with the events that we asked him to run, the Globe Ball event, we talked a little bit about it here last time I was up, the community event that we had, we just got done with a turkey shoot, which was great, and really one of Jason's goals is, again, to continue to elevate those events and to continue to elevate those resident experiences. But I think more importantly, it's to easily understand the pricing for the consumers. Again, the dynamic pricing worked, but I think it got a little bit to the point where maybe static pricing might be easier for some of the consumers to, to grasp, and it might be, it's going to end up likely picking up some rounds. So non-resident rates in 2025, the chart on your right, nine, non-resident rates, we had a, a minimum price, a floor price of $29 during the week, and a ceiling price of 36 during the week, and on the weekends, we had a floor price of 32 up until 3 o'clock, and then we had a ceiling price of 39. We, what we did was we did some analysis to kind of take a look at what the average rates were, when we saw the most rounds usage across those different day parts, to come up with some static pricing that would not only increase ADR, but would also likely increase the rounds played, because we want to make sure that we can increase rounds played to increase revenue, we want the rounds played to go up, we don't want it to go down, because we're seeing a little bit of a downtrend right now. So the proposal is for weekdays, open to 3 o'clock, to be $30, 3:00 p.m. to close, to be $28, weekends from open to noon, to be 34, which is really on the, kind of on the tail end of, well, kind of on the middle, the middle of the, of the rate, noon to 3:31, and then 3 o'clock to close, 29. So instituting a little bit of variable pricing without the dynamic aspect of it, so instituting a second rate, kind of a mid-tier rate on that weekend, on the weekends, and then to have a non-resident cart rate of $12, which is the same cart rate that we have currently. Resident rates, so resident rates made up about 17% of our total rounds played in 2025, which was about 3,232 rounds, down 3% year over year. Resident rates made up $42,931 in, in revenue. The ADR for resident rate was $24.60, which was up 8% year over year. The junior and senior rate revenue was 18,944, 6% of our total revenue, and that was a, a rate of $20. So what we're proposing to do in FY '26 is, again, kind of take our average rates that we saw and institute those as the resident rates. Weekend, weekdays, open to 3, $24, 3 o'clock to close, $22, and then the weekends, 27 till noon, and again, instituting a mid-tier rate, the $25 rate, and then 3 o'clock dropping that rate to 23, and then having a resident cart rate of $10 to try and get the residents back out at the facility. What's the financial impact if we move to static pricing from the dynamic? The static pricing, so this, this is showing peak season, so April through the end of September. If we, using the same, the same rounds played for 2026, the static pricing revenue assumption would be 139,000 in greens fees, the dynamic pricing revenue assumption would be 155. So all else being equal, same rate, same rounds, same everything, we would certainly do more on dynamic pricing. So obviously, we need to increase rounds in order to break even if we move to a static model. Rounds would need to increase by about 5%, which if you go back to the first chart, is where we first started to see a deep, before we first implemented dynamic pricing, that's, that's about the pickup we need to receive, the 5%, 900... the 5%, 900 rounds in order to get back to a break even point.
Well, but with a, with an average round of about 27, $28, to make up, to make up that 17,000, you only need about 500 rounds or so, which, which your projection showed us to maybe going up as much as 600, so.
Correct.
And I, and I think with the, the rates we're talking about here, especially the resident, I think we'll see a pickup in, I'm hoping we'll see a pickup in the residential.
I think we will because we saw it when, when, and we've run some, some pricing analysis and some sensitivity analysis on pricing to determine, basically saying that as, as rounds, as, as rate will drop slightly, the round pickup will be greater than the rate drop. So.
Hopefully, yeah, yeah.
This is just some analysis of some local facilities here. We took Heather Ridge, we took Carrot and Jokes, Rob Roy, Gracel Lake Golf Course, Willow Hill, Willow Hill, to kind of take a look at some of the rates that they have at their facilities and really kind of make it very competitive. And I think we are, we are competitive. Don't get me wrong. We're very competitive with the, with the industry. We're just trying to pick up the share of the resident rate coming back to us.
How many passes did you sell this year versus last year?
We were down 10 passes year over year.
But more members were playing, more rounds of those members were playing? Is that how I read the numbers?
Correct.
What number of rounds, an increase in rounds, like every thousand, like does it put more strain on the maintenance of the facility?
Yeah, yes and no. I mean, grass is pretty resilient. We're talking Kentucky bluegrass. We're not talking bent grass. So grass comes back pretty quickly. I think the agronomic practices that we put in with the additional fertilizer applications, the additional chemical applications, that's doing more than, we can handle the rounds.
That, I guess it's capacity, what I was kind of thinking about. Okay, I was just curious.
Well, and a course like this can take more of a beating than a course like even White Deer Run where the, like you said, the different style of grass in the fairway.
So you want to find a way to get more residents in, right? Are you seeing, are you seeing the drop over there in residence? Not seeing the same faces?
Well, yeah, and the numbers show it too. And that, that's one of the reasons for this. As you saw in the price, there was a, about a dollar rollback in the resident, resident rate.
Do you think it's because of the dynamic pricing? Or do you think it's the pricing over there?
Part, part of it.
You talk to those guys all the time.
Part of it. I mean, when you look at, that on a Sunday morning, Heather Ridge was like, you know, $34 with a cart, and we were at, you know, 48 to 51.
The red, so to, to piggyback off your question, Trustee Shank, about annual passes, we went down about 10 annual passes year over year. So the recommendation is to leave the rates for the annual passes exactly the same. No change on annual pass rates at all. I think we'll, you know, hopefully, as other golf courses, because this analysis that you see here, as other golf courses come out with their rates for 2026, their rates are going to go up. Ours are going to stay status quo. Hopefully, we'll bring back some additional annual pass holders for, for FY '27.
Well, and the pass holders are still getting, as, as a, as a pass holder, I can guarantee you, we're still getting a, a dollars per round deal.
Oh, 100%. So the next, the next steps for us are to, Tom and Kevin have asked to see the draft budget in early December. We'll incorporate, assuming that these rates are, are, we have the go ahead to move with these rates. We'll, we'll work on the financials to get the preliminary budget to Tom and John and Kevin in December, and then obviously come back here with the consolidated roll up and show everybody what the total package looks like. But this will give us the approval to, to move forward and then hopefully get working on some sales here of annual passes once we hit the new year.
Trustee Forster?
Excuse me. I have two questions. Hold that thought.
By the way, I can't wait to come see the fireworks show.
It's going to be really good.
The fireworks show is going to be fantastic.
I have a frog in my throat, sorry. Two questions. One, if, if there, the thought is maybe this dynamic pricing is a bit of an issue and prohibiting people from coming, how are we going to promote that we have changed our pricing so that, because these people are not going to know, it's not going to, they're going off last year. How are we going to market it and promote the price changes to make it obvious what's happening?
The second question, so you can answer all at once, is do we have, this is all about rounds and everything. Do we have any goals for event revenue for the year? Like have you, are you starting since that has started to build some? Have, do we have a separate bucket of annual goals and what we're looking to achieve for perhaps a number of events, type of events and revenue in that area so that we have something to aspire for and change, separate from, you know, the food and beverage, but event revenue goals?
Yeah, I'll take the first question.
Yes, sure.
So we have to be very careful when we make a change in rates. We typically don't advertise rates in general. The one thing we will do, which was typical before dynamic pricing, was to post the rates on the website. Typically, most courses you'll see that are on dynamic pricing, just say we use a dynamic pricing model. It's consistent with airlines and hotels. To look for the best rate, go to the online booking engine. So now if we have static posted rates, we would post those again on the website. And the way we would combat some of the concerns around pricing or rate perception would be to just positively promote the golf course and the experience versus widely advertising, we're going away from dynamic pricing.
Yeah, we promote the rate, but we don't mention the word dynamic price.
I wouldn't think that you would.
Well, the thing, the thing you would notice, if you went to any of the, the websites, you would notice that as you saw, none of the other courses in the area have the dynamic pricing. And when you would look at our website versus the other websites, all of our prices had an asterisk next to them.
Yeah.
And nobody else's did. And then you go down and the asterisk explains that that means when you get there, it might be a little higher because of the dynamic pricing. So I, I think when you go to just a straight website as, as ours would be, the only change would be that that asterisk would be gone and, and I, I don't think anybody would even notice the difference.
Yeah, but to Trustee Forster's point, I do think it's important to get the word out to the general public.
Yeah.
And I think golfers are, golfers are pretty, you know, price conscious and, and they will search and they will look. But I think we're going to have to, we are definitely going to have to let them know that these are the rates.
Yeah.
These are the rates. The rates aren't going to change. These are what they're going to be.
Yeah.
And maybe some kind of marketing, direct mail within the community, our community in particular.
Resident rates.
Resident rate, particular to just Vernon Hills. You can, non-residents, you don't have to worry about, they'll figure it out when they go on the website. But maybe if you're trying to increase the resident rate, I have never seen a direct mail piece, you know, we use the board, but I've never seen a direct mail piece at my house. I live two blocks away. It'd be kind of nice to, you know, a special offering or, you know, something for the resident. Then at that time, you could promote the resident rate has gone down a dollar or whatever it was, you don't, without calling it out, but people know.
Yeah, exactly. And can promote the overall experience of the facility to all the events, to go into your second question.
Yeah, just a way to increase, you know, that part of it.
Yeah, we're building our, as part of the budget process, we're building our marketing plan for FY '27 as well. So it's perfect time to talk about incorporating costs for direct mail into that.
Yeah.
And to answer your second question.
Yeah, the events, I was wondering.
About the, yeah, about the events. So that'll be outlined in the budget presentation, what the events will be and what the metrics and the goals. And I know Jason's already started building that calendar. And I've seen it. It's, it's good. It's great work. And it's time to start moving on that.
Well, and, and based on history, I, I think I'm on fairly firm ground saying that there'll be more both golf events and non-golf events based on Jason's history with the course, you know, prior to what we've been the last few years.
Yeah, he had some great ideas when he was here.
Yeah.
And the, the glow, what was it? Globe Ball?
Globe Ball.
Yeah, that was, I ran into people who thought that was cool and that the, the runway idea was cool and all that. So hopefully, we can build on some of that.
Yeah, we plan to build on the momentum of the three events this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Yeah. So what we're basically proposing then is going back to the, the, the static pricing that you had on the left side of both the resident and non-resident, as well as keeping the pass in place.
Correct.
Okay. So everybody, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome back, Jason.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome back.
Okay. Then next item on the agenda is an update on the Harvey Lake master plan. Director Banana?
Yes, thank you. So if the, the board members, earlier this year, we awarded a contract to Christopher Burke Engineering to put together a master plan for Harvey Lake. This, this project was really twofold. We looked at two things. One, how can we be good stewards of this property that the village owns? So the first job was to look at what kind of natural area restoration that is recommended to be completed on this project site or on the site. And the second part of that project was to then look at some options and costs to amenities if we wanted to add or improve anything. So I'm going to go through that here tonight. Ultimately, the goal is to, those, those natural areas, those stewardship items, we're going to take those and work those into our capital improvement program that I'll give a, a presentation on later this year. And then the amenity items, we'll look for some feedback from the board and see if you would like that to also get worked into our capital program. So what I'll go over, briefly touch on the, the history of the site. We did a public survey. I'll give you the results of that. Then talk about those number three and four, the two things I talked about, the natural area, restoration, water quality improvements, and then talk about some of our recreational amenities, and go over costs and some next steps. So I think you're all familiar with the, the site. This is where Harvey Lake is. Just some, just some stats. It's a 14-acre lake. The village acquired it in 2000 as part of the Greggs Landing subdivision. A lot of the, the neighboring subdivisions drain into Harvey Lake, which then ultimately outlets to the west into Little Bear Lake under, under Lakeview Parkway. So it's an important part of the drainage system within the village. So up to this point, in the last couple of years, there's been some, a lot of work done in-house through the village staff, public work staff, as well as some contractors. We, we did a lot of buckthorn clearing and restoration on the, the north and west side of the lake. We also built a boardwalk on, on that southern, southeastern corner. That area is, is really low lying, kind of a wetland area. So that boardwalk helps get access to the southern portion throughout the year to maintain. And when you do these, these natural area restorations, it takes several years to really fully establish it into a more sustainable, we call it a stewardship state. So the first year, it's getting all the buckthorn out, putting cover crops in, and then you continue to work through the, the seed mixes and tending to that spot before it, it gets in a more sustainable state. We have several sites like this. We're going to see something very similar on the CV ditch. So sometimes you may get some feedback that it looks like maybe not as much activity is taking place in these, but there's periodic mowings and burnings to, to really get it to convert back into a, a native area. So you can see there's some pictures of the boardwalk that was built and, and the cleared area to the, on the picture on the right. And I, and I'll just note that through all of these options, the intention has always been to have this be a more natural area. It wouldn't be to have turf like Century Park is, where it's grass, just that gets mowed on a weekly basis. This is always meant to be a more natural area. And we, we got that feedback through the survey from a lot of the community that said they didn't want to see it just be a mowed turf area. They wanted it to be a more nature space. So just real, real briefly, this is a survey of the, the depths of the lake. You can see what the number you're kind of looking for around is an eight-foot depth is a really good depth to promote a good aquatic life. So we are seeing that in many places, and it's as deep as, you know, 13 and a half feet over on the, the west side of the lake, which is really good for promoting a good ecological habitat. As far as sedimentation, sedimentation is a problem. It's, it's one of the main reasons we're doing the, the CV ditch project is sedimentation in Lake Charles. But we're really not seeing too much sedimentation in Harvey Lake. There's this little forbay on the, the southern end where some storm sewer pipes outlet. The, generally, these, these, that little teardrop is intentionally designed to collect sediment. It's a location that then you can periodically dredge in the future if you see that start to really fill in and then spill into the rest of the lake. So it's, it's functioning as expected, and that's the place that you're seeing the most amount of sedimentation within the property. So the public survey, we, we promoted it on the village website. We also mailed out postcards to 244 residences in the immediate adjacent subdivisions. We got a total of 129 responses from the community. I would say overall, it was really generally favorable, supportive feedback. Some of the things, the amenities that a lot of people touched on, there was a lot of support for walking paths. A lot of people brought up fishing and fishing access, some, some benches, trash cans, bird watching stations. We got a lot of feedback involving keeping it in that natural area and being able to have more access to it. Some interesting facts about the way people responded. So we asked, how likely are you to get to, how would you like to get to this property? And you can see the vast majority of people thought they would walk there, with almost three quarters walking and just a quarter would get there by automobile or bike. Granted, we don't have much vehicular access today. You would have to park on Bay Tree in the subdivision. The, the next point, we also asked, would you come as this, as your sole destination? Or do you think you would incorporate it into some other recreational outing? And we saw the majority of people would incorporate it as part of another trip to, say they're in Century Park and they'd want to continue their, their walk or their run through the Harvey Lake area. Or maybe they're using the Greggs and Museum multi-use path. They would like to continue that into Harvey Lake, while about a quarter said they would make a dedicated trip to this property. You can see over half of people said they would use the walking path a few times a week. Again, over, a little over half said they would prefer an asphalt path to gravel or grass. The vast majority preferred a looped path around the entire lake, which was one of the questions we'd ask. I would add a caveat there to, we did get comments, I would say the people that were less in favor were, the lot of the residences, or not a lot, the few responses were from the residences that are on the immediate east side of that, who had concerns about the, the proximity of its path to their property. I'd say it's very similar to the proximity of some of the townhomes to the, the path on Big Bear Lake, as you look at the, the trail that goes right behind their property. Difference obviously is they've had this large natural area in their backyard for, for a long time. And we do incorporate that in some of the suggestions I'll make later on. You can see then, 58% also have wanted some sort of fishing amenity. We have additional comments here. There were a lot of comments about the crossing of Lake view Parkway, building that out and making that a connection to Century Park and making it safer. And then I noted the proximity of a looped path to the neighboring homes on the, on the east side. So I'll start with some of the natural area restoration, water quality improvements that, that we recommend. So the first option we list here is to continue that clearing effort that we've done on the, the north and west side to the south side. I would say this is a slightly more difficult than the area we did because it's a lot wetter through here. But we would recommend removing the, the buckthorn and continuing to restore that area to really take, take care to keep this property from eroding and be good stewards of this, this village property. Another option, number two, is to add an aerator system. What, what this would do is help, again, help the aquatic life, help prevent algae and milfoil blooms. We see that in the summer, like we do in most of the lakes and detention ponds within the village. I would say it's, it's, we don't get a, a ton of complaints about this property as we do some of the other properties. But as you, if you do want to increase it as a public amenity and bring more people, adding a system like this is always a, always a benefit to the water quality. And the last one on here is, is dredging. I would say that that's not a, a immediate need. It's not a year one, two, three problem that we're having. But it is something that, as eventually what we're going to see is that start, that forbay fill in and start to spill into the rest of the lake, and, and it will. spill into the rest of the lake, and, and it will have, be necessary to do some dredging work. So the next step I'll jump into is some of the recreational amenities we looked at. Really, the, the base project we're calling here would be if we wanted to add a path. So have like the, the core amenity that would bring people in. We took that feedback of supporting an asphalt path, which would also make it ADA compliant. So people, people with mobility issues could still access this property. So this would also include a updated crossing on Lakeview Parkway. Right now, there's a pedestrian crosswalk to the south of this. We wouldn't need two along this stretch, so we'd propose removing that, relocating this one kinda closer to a good access to Harvey Lake, as well as matching up with the Century Park path as well. We're showing an access up to Bay Tree and also a loop down on the south side. I would say this is, this is, all of these are conceptual in nature. So if we, if we did receive the feedback from the board that we'd like to explore some of these options, we could change the alignment. We could look at, you know, like the, the boardwalk, for example, it's shown through that area. We could eliminate a portion of it depending on what the bigger scope is. But this would be a, a basic concept where, where we feel would be a good, good starting point for other amenities to, to add to the park. So you see that the asphalt path, including design and construction, the conceptual budget is around a million dollars for that. The boardwalk, if we would add that part to the, the south side's around $200,000. Another option on top of that then would be to continue some mulch or grass paths off of this area. Right now, there currently is a mowed path on the west side where you're seeing the yellow line, number five there. Go back behind those homes. This is what village staff uses for access. We need to get around there. We also see people using that today. We thought that this would be a good compromise to some of that feedback of concerns of the path and immediate proximity to their backyard. If it's, you know, a, a not as year-round use, or maybe not everyone would use it. You wouldn't bike through there or, or use other modes of transportation. It might be a happy medium between having a looped path around the lake and, and none at all. We would add, also recommend maybe a split rail fence on that east side to have some separation between the, the private property and village property. But much of this, this mulch grass path would be fairly simple to put in. The only thing we're showing here is on the, the northeast corner, we'd likely need a retaining wall in there to keep it a wide enough, flat enough path. The next option, the, kinda the biggest, the hardest thing to complete a full loop around the lake is to bridge the, that four-bay area. There are kinda, there are, I'm showing one option here. There are really two options to do it, what we're showing. And then you could go to the south of that, but it's a very, like I said, a wetland area and it would be a long floating boardwalk that was actually more expensive and, and probably from a perspective of a natural area. I think if you're here, you wanna be by the lake and not, you know, as close to the commercial development on the south side. So for the sake of options, I'm, I'm showing just the bridge here connecting it, which we think would be the best option. Yeah, go ahead.
So if, if you're on this one, can you, can you go to the next slide just for a second? So what you're talking about is it would actually be more expensive to use that, that southern loop around the base of that than to build the bridge across there?
Yes, cuz that, that southern loop around the base is entirely like a floating structure. It has piers that go into the wetland, so it's, it's significantly longer.
So the bridge on option six is actually cheaper than going around the loop to the south?
Yeah, I believe it was 1.2 million was the estimate for that boardwalk. And good, good catch. I had eliminated it off this sheet, but I left it on the next one.
Well, just looking at the picture, it looks like it would be cheaper, but it apparently is not.
Yeah, no, it, it is not.
Thank you.
Sure. And so the, the, the last amenity that we're listing out, or not the last one, this, this next option would be if we wanted to add a parking lot. We, we lined it up with the street adjacent to it. It would be around $450,000. We're, we're showing that we would have a rain garden associated with it, really to meet some of the, the stormwater, water quality needs and also part of the, would match well with this, with this amenity.
What's a rain garden?
So, so a rain garden is a, it's a vegetated area that the stormwater from the parking lot would flow into. So that, that rather than connecting into a storm sewer system, you would let that water, there's twofold. One, it lets the water percolate back into the groundwater, into the groundwater. And also, as a water quality benefit, it cleans out some of the sediment, oils, things that the, the plant material can, can filter it.
Would you do permeable favors in that parking lot or no?
Uh, there's potential for that. We would look and see what the.
But costly compared to this.
Yeah, it, it's an option. The subsurface conditions really drive whether or not you get a lot of value from that. But if this was something we wanted to look into, we could certainly incorporate that. And the last amenity we, we looked to add here is an, is an option is some piers, some fishing pier or just, you know, sitting viewing out of the water. You'll see there's one that's shown right off what would be, could be a parking lot or, or the entryway area on the west side, and then a smaller one to the east. You can see a picture of a, a similar project that Christopher Burke did and, and some approximate costs for that. So this is a summary of all the different options we talked about. I have one more slide after this to talk about some of the funding, but what, what I, what I led with in the beginning here, my recommendation is, is that first three options, the restoration, water quality, we're going to, I'll, I'll make recommendations to work these into our, our CIP over the coming years. We see this as something that is the village being good stewards of this property needing to take on. And the rest of the projects is, is really up to where the board would like to see this, this parcel go. Based on the, the survey and the community feedback, a lot of people were excited about coming out and visiting this property, yet there's a, there's a cost associated to all of it as well. So on that note, there are a couple of funding opportunities. So any, any recommendation, if we did wanna move forward with some of these amenities, my, my recommendation would be the first step is to start a preliminary design that we then could, could shop around for some funding opportunities. The biggest one is the OSLAD grant. It's the Open Spaces Land Acquisition and Development Grant. That provides up to a 50% match, up to a max funding of $600,000. We think any of those amenity options would be a, a great candidate for this, this grant opportunity. It's an annual grant, so you can apply for it every year. Our, our park district received this grant. I believe both Hartman Park and Gross Point Park have received OSLAD grants, so they use this opportunity pretty frequently. Another good opportunity would be the Regional Trails Program. This only requires a 20% match and up to $200,000 in funding. And from what I understand so far is that you can stack these as well. So you can, you can. So if you'd wanna go for both of them, the, the 50% match for the OSLAD grant could include funding from another grant as well. And lastly, there's this Water Quality Management Grant through the IEP. This one is, would be for some of those, you know, your, your aerator systems or dredging projects for the, the water quality is, it's an opportunity. So like I said, at this time, I'll open up, take any, any questions or feedback you may have, but I think ultimately what this will lead to is a discussion that we can have during our, our five-year CIP discussion that I, I plan on doing in December, so.
Question about the fishing.
Sure.
This would require stocking at least at the beginning, correct? I mean.
Uh, yes, we do currently stock this lake. And like we said, with the, with the lake depths, we see a lot of the, we don't, we don't have a, a lot of the fish can over winter. So I've, I've heard that there's very good fish within the lake. Occasionally, we've, we've had to chase off some ice fishers in the winter that have braved out, out on this, this property. So we see it a little bit today already. But yes, yes, it's, it's already something that's, that's done.
Other comments, questions from the board? Trustee Abinai?
Did you consider maybe making a little bridge to that island there instead of having an eastern fishing pier?
You're talking about the one in the center of the water here?
Yeah.
Uh, I, we, we didn't consider at this point that that island is, it, I would say it's rather unstable. It's, it's, it changes throughout the season. It's been eroding a lot. We tried to plant some trees out there to see if they would take and hold it together a little more, but it looks large in this rendering, but it's, uh, it, it's not really large enough for an amenity.
Okay.
Do you wanna buy the island?
Yeah, yeah.
Oppenheimer.
Oppenheimer's island.
The island of Doctor, what was that movie?
Little House on the Dr. Oh, that sounds like a.
What was that movie?
Yeah, the Isle of Doctor Oh.
The Doctor Oh. Got some scientific experiments going on that island.
I saw that movie, I think. Other comments or questions from the board?
Good job, Chris.
Yeah. I know there were comments made about parking, having a parking lot.
Yeah, we, we saw, we, we did see many comments about having more access. I, I think that right now, this parcel doesn't have any logical access. And I don't think to ask the, to, to make this a parcel for the whole community and then ask them to park on the street at Bay Tree Circle to get there, doesn't make sense. So that's why I had a minimum, and making a better access off of Lakeview through the Century Park system.
Yeah.
So people could access it that way. And then again, these don't all have to be at once. You could, and you could build the path first. If it gets some use and we hear we wanna add a parking lot at a later time, they can all stack on top of each other as well.
Is there any access to, to the businesses just south of there?
No. And, and one piece of feedback we did get on the survey was some concern from the residents here that we would completely open that up and they would see a lot of the backs of the commercial buildings in that area. We don't own all the land up to those businesses. There's already some buffers in there, but we would be sensitive about not, having some screening still in place behind those businesses. It, it's a very wetland-type area, so I don't think access to any of the properties to the south would, would be feasible.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions from the board?
I have a, I don't know if we can tell here. So if you look at this picture, the fishing pier, then if you were to roll up to the east, there's a piece of open property between two of the buildings. Is that, oh man, let's, oh, go back to that one. Too bad, too bad. Do you want? Yeah. This one? Too zoomed out. Too zoomed out. All right, that one. So where it says mowed path, like come down southeast, right? And then you see where there's like an open area that feeds into the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Who owns that? Like, can we build a path through there?
Um, so that's HOA property through that area. So if we wanted to make a connection to get out towards Museum Boulevard, if that's what you're talking about.
To Cuneo.
Um, to get to Cuneo, that would be a conversation. We'd need an easement and access agreement with the HOA.
So they can't build on that likely? That's probably not buildable. Probably not space, right?
Yeah, it's, there's not much space. It's a small, small parcel.
How much space is there between the, the Bay Tree Circle residences and, and the path?
And it's narrowest spot.
On the east side there, that, yeah, right where it says mowed path.
Yeah. I would estimate it's around 50 feet.
Which with a buffer is not bad.
Again, I would, I would say it's, if you can see, it, it's not dissimilar to the path on the, the east side of Big Bear Lake that circles it to the, to the townhomes there. So if you're ever in that area, it's kind of a similar, similar type of offset.
A lot of the park paths in New Century Town, very similar.
Will this be a lighted path?
Um, that wasn't in the, in the current cost estimates. We, we would assume this would be a, you know, dusk till dawn type property, similar to, to Century Park.
Yeah, especially for Chief, you would, that would be a recommendation you'd make, that it would be a dusk to dawn park?
Yes, sir.
Can you, can you like, we have the boat launch. Could you like a canoe launch there or no?
Dusk.
I, I think that certainly could be an option.
Dusk to dusk.
What?
You said dusk to dawn, dawn to dusk.
Oh, dawn, dawn to dusk, yeah. Not dusk to dawn. No, dawn to dusk.
Dusk to dawn?
Morning to evening.
Yes.
Not in the dark.
I know what you meant.
Yeah.
You don't want lights, you don't want lights there cuz of all the houses and stuff. It's just too distracting. I'm sure they will.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for correcting that, isn't it? Yeah. Sun up to sundown.
Good job, Chris.
So I, I'll, I'll come back with some recommendations to the board during our, our five-year CIP discussion.
Any other comments or questions on this subject?
What?
Okay, then.
What, the, what was going into the building just east of Bolero that used to be the furniture place?
The health club.
It was a gym, but.
To Jim. It was gonna be a gym, but.
The last we heard from them, they were not definitely moving forward with it. There was, there was some question as to whether or not they were gonna complete that plan. They did get a conversion certificate, but they have not come in for permit yet. I think they started looking at other property, but I, I don't know that they've decided, so.
Dave? Dave? Okay, anything else? All right, then that's all we had on the committee tonight, correct? And there is no, no closed session? All right. Then is there a motion to adjourn the committee, the whole? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you and good night.